Hi everyone. Hi Gullimah, hi Barney, hi William, hi Vanabas. Hello Clement. Thank you and boys. Good to have you here and today we're going to be having the um the one hundred and thirteenth town hall meeting. Today and today we're going to be getting updates on different things and different categories and we have our representatives from each of these different guilds we're meant to um that are meant to like give a speech or give updates on things that are going on in the guild and also the um the quarterly budget also. So the first um first we have here is the um hold on, sorry. So the first that we have here on our agenda is the research and development guild. The Q four proposal submission updates. And the second we have is the Q three reports and budgets deadline status. Then the third we have also is the monthly work group sync call agenda, which is meant to hold on Thursdays. Yeah, so we're going to be treating them one by one, treating the agenda one by one, like one after the other. Are we, are you, are you with me? Are you guys hearing me?
Would you, would you follow G? You're great. Yes, yes, completely.
Okay, oh, okay. So the first we have is research and development guild, which is the proposal submission updates, which is meant to be delivered by Lord Kizi. Is Lord Kizi here with us?
No, but I can do that.
Okay.
I can help with that. So um yeah, probably Kizi. Uh a lot, a lot of the members probably follow the the, it'd be an old link, I just been everyone. Um but I can give an update, uh I'll keep it short. So as everyone knows, a few weeks ago, we already uh uh deployed this new R and D Guild proposal submission, following this new operation system. Um having all the members uh and core contributors invited to participate on the on this new process of for onboarding uh new ideas and turning our R and D Guild into and instead of a member uh Guild into an ideas driven Guild. So everyone in the community is open to submit uh proposals for this uh new system that we have shared. Today, uh as the um dates indicates in this slide, uh Tuesday, September the third, we are closing um submissions. We have the door open for a week. Um we do wanna uh commit to our timeline uh to keep it fair for the people that have submitted on time. Uh so today we're closing the door twenty three uh fifty nine UTC. Uh so whoever is out there and wants to uh submit their ideas, you still have plenty of time. The template is easy to follow. Uh gives you specific guidelines on how to uh submit your proposal and to keep it short and concrete as possible. Uh then uh a review process, what we call a eligibility review process will start uh tomorrow um till uh when will be uh September the tenth. We will discuss starting tomorrow um on the R and D weekly meeting. The opportunities uh and we will study all the proposals. And then we will open the uh the selection and engage with the community for voting from the eleven to the eighteen. Um As uh as up today, we have four proposals been submitted. Hmm. And I know there are gonna be, I know there are gonna be more coming. Um so um sorry boss, I just mute you. Um you're making some noise on the background. So um yeah, we're very excited. Uh two proposals already submitted. Uh I've been reached by other community members. Uh they were so we are looking forward to have more uh before the end of this day. And we will keep you updated on the review process and then we'll invite everyone to vote and participate on selecting the ideas that we will be uh allocated in the budget. So um yeah, the door is still open. Come on, join, bring your ideas. Uh that's it on my side for G.
I think you muted him instead of um Boaz.
Oh, don't worry. Let's keep going.
Yeah, okay. Um. Say um just to make everyone know that our occasion closes today through the third of September. That's eleven fifty nine UTC and the review process, which should be September fourth to September tenth. And the community voting we hold September eleventh to September eighteenth also. Hope everybody keeps that in mind. So um the second on our list, the second slide, which is meant to be the Q three reports and Q four budget deadline process updates, which should be given by Barney. Barney, you have the stage.
So look, can you go to the next slide, please? Cause that outlines what I wanna tell people. And if you could, could you go to slideshow so we can see it full screen? Cause it is kind of small for some of the text. All right, so we, what we've basically got is we wanted to give everybody a bit of an update about the work group appro, budget approval timeline for quarter four. I think most people are now aware that your budgets and your quarter three reports need to go in by the ninth, Monday the ninth. And um I think a few people are thinking, okay, so what's the um, what happens after that? And what is the the timeline after that? So we've got something here. Um yeah, so get your budgets in by Monday. And I think somebody might be able to drop the link to Tevo's budget calculator spreadsheet, which is where you put them. And let's hope that everybody gets in on time midnight on Monday the ninth. And then we'll set up the forms. And the first form is like a really simple, straightforward form. In previous um work group budget approval processes, we've had like sixteen forms right from the get go. And we think that put people off a little bit. So what we're trying to do is simplify the first round. So what there will be is one form that simply says, do you approve, not approve or abstain on a list of all the work groups? So you're not asked to give your reasons or anything like that. It's just, do you, do you approve it or not? And um you, obviously you need to read the work groups budgets and quarterly reports in order to decide whether you do. But you just don't have to formulate all your reasons and set it all out. So your deadline for sending in that first form is Thursday, the twelfth of September, again at midnight. All right. So yeah, you've submitted your consent form, your first consent form by midnight on Thursday. And then the following day on the Friday, any work groups that have got no objections will be waved through and approved. So we only do individual consent forms for the ones who are left and those will be shared on that day on Friday. You have the weekend to have a go at those consent forms as a core contributor. And I should probably indicate that this process is involves core contributors. So I'll say a little bit more about that if anybody doesn't know what a core contributor is in a minute. But um by Monday, again at midnight, that's the deadline for core contributors to submit their second consent form. And that will only be an individual form for those work groups that haven't already been approved. Then the following day, Tuesday, the seventeenth at fifteen hundred UTC, we have a governance work group meeting. I think that might be wrong. I think it might be fourteen hundred UTC. That's the calendar doing my head in, but um it's on the calendar. It's the normal governance work group meeting and that's where we will discuss any objections that have been raised to the outstanding budgets. After that, the work groups whose concerns still haven't been resolved um have a chance to amend their budgets and sort of respond to concerns that have been raised. And they have until the end of Sunday, midnight on Sunday, the twenty second, to do that and to submit a new budget. If they want to, I guess. And um the day after, the Monday, is when we will release consent forms for the final consent round. And people will be looking at the new amended budgets to decide whether their concerns are addressed. Um the deadline for getting those final consent forms in is Wednesday, the twenty fifth. And that is quite a short window, obviously, from the Monday to the Wednesday. But hopefully by this point, it should only be a couple of work groups who still have outstanding concerns. And so, yeah, those final consent forms go in by the end of Wednesday, the twenty fifth. And on the following day, Thursday, the twenty sixth, the open governance call will discuss any outstanding objections. And at this point, only eighty percent of approval is required. And that's eighty percent of those who submitted a form rather than eighty percent of the entire program. So the only thing left to say is a little bit about what a core contributor is. These are people who've been involved in the um the slide's gone. Core contributors are people who've been vol, been involved in the program for a little while. And it's calculated every time we have a decision to make. So it's anyone who has done, I think it's twelve hours of work in the program over the last six months. So it was quite a broad window and um generally tends to capture people who are active and are involved. But we also always have the human touch in there. So if there's anybody who, when Tevo does the calculation, turns out not to be a core contributor, but they are kind of somebody who contributes, they can be nominated to be a core contributor for this decision. So um nobody gets left out. What we'll be doing is sometime before Monday, the list of core contributors will be sent out. And it's an opt-in process. If you find you're on the list because you've contributed enough to be on it, but you don't wanna be a core contributor, you can opt out. So it's probably gonna be Peter that DMs you and says, you're a core contributor? Do you wanna be a core contributor? And you can just say yes or no. And that will determine who gets to fill in one of these consent forms and add their voice to the decision-making process. Right, sorry, I think that's all. And there will be time for questions later if anybody has any questions, but I think we need to move on. All right.
Okay, thank you, Barney. Yeah, sorry for screwing up the slides. But yeah, we got it pretty well. So Foro G, you're back on stage.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Or you can just, you can just keep on sharing. I'll just, that's fine. So I'm moving on to the next slide. Um I think there's the third one. Moving on to the next slide, third agenda, which is the monthly work group sync call agenda. Um the monthly work group sync call is going to be um shared by Gullimah Gilma. I think you have the link there. If I'm not mistaken, so yep. I think I can go for it.
Thank you, Foro G. Yeah, I just shared the link on the chat. Uh probably Barney has more insights on this because she put this agenda. Uh the idea when, when we were discussing the topics for today, uh what would be a good use of time? Um having in mind that we have this uh monthly work group and leads uh meeting on Thursday. The idea was to use this time to invite community members that participate in today's town hall to brainstorm um on this, on this agenda topics. Okay, so um I'm gonna, I don't know if you guys can see now, oh document opening, yeah, that's it. You guys can see the file?
Yeah, it's clear.
Okay, so you guys can open this. Um probably it does have let me see, yeah, it does have, uh I see.
Just drop the link in the chat for anyone who wants to jump in.
Yeah, the link is there already.
Yeah, it is. Uh thank you, Barney. So that is to brainstorm. Um Barney, you, it's your document. I, I, I hate jumping in your documents and messing my mouth.
Not, it's our document, it's everyone's.
Well, I know, I know, but it's your, your uh so again, um.
I mean, I think all we wanna say is that the work group sync call is a relatively new agenda, new item. We've had it twice, I think, and it's meant to be monthly. And um it's just an opportunity for all the work groups to come together and kind of talk about issues that cross over like all of us, rather than things that are specific to individual work groups. So you can see in the document a list of things that have been discussed, which might give you inspiration. Or you might think, yeah, it's been discussed, but it hasn't been discussed properly. So you can add it back in. And at the top, you've got new agenda items. So if you've got anything that you would like to see discussed at the forthcoming work group sync call this Thursday to ten o'clock UTC in the morning, then please add it. And it would just be great to see people from a range of different work groups showing up and coming to talk about the things that affect us all. I mean, you can see a couple of the things on there. Some of them are quite simple and straightforward, like, do we need a work group lead tag in Discord? And some of them are kind of more complex and more like in-depth. But please feel free to add your ideas. Even if it turns out you can't make the meeting, you can still add an agenda item.
Yeah, thank you, Barney. So I, I will do this. I will read through the, the items. Um just to build the context of the, what we are just gonna be addressing. Um and again, some are more relevant than others, uh but still uh probably is a good uh use of time. I will keep it short, but um uh first item, do we need a work group lead tag in Discord or is the core contributor one sufficient? Uh this is in regards of calling the attention of leads to follow up, attending important meetings. Uh my personal take is, yeah, that we need one, um even if it's a relative, uh something that we rotate, a lead. Uh but it had, it had shown that we, at least we need the discussion. Um a discussion doc uh from AI Ethics Workgroup uh thought on money work and pay in work groups. Um I don't have the context of this. I, I wouldn't have to open the document. Um but this is something that's coming, uh dropping down from the AI Ethics Workgroup. Uh you have any context of this, Barney?
Say if people wanna open it and have a look, but these are discussion points that came out of an AI Ethics meeting about some of the things we've noticed about how the program overall manages work and pay and money. And these are issues that affect every work group, I think. They're not unique to us. But we've put down some of the ideas that we have about how we handle it. And it's not attempting to try and get everybody to align or anything like that. It's more about recognizing that each work group is gonna tackle these issues in different ways. And it might just be useful to have a conversation about the different ways we approach it and maybe learn some stuff from each other. That's all.
Okay, yeah, great stuff. We do all work groups and guilds uh handle things differently. Um so I think it's a great thing to, yeah, share the good practices. So they are looking forward to discuss that topic. Um next one on the line, increasing number uh versus non-increasing program budgets capabilities and whether, how we assess it. Should work groups train people? Already started discussion in governance sessions. Um yeah, so again, this is another link document that brings the agenda of uh class governance uh work group sessions we have. Um I think this uh addressed the issue, what do we do uh when market price fluctuation and how we address the needs for cutting budgets. Um and yeah, one of the things we were discussing at this bullet point address is uh where, where do we start cutting? Uh probably education on workshops. Uh is the best place? Uh it is or it's not, it's the opposite. So this is gonna be addressed on, I think it will be a very, we have like three minutes in regards of this. Uh so probably we will have some final, uh let's say, um comments to share. Um next bullet point, share account management. This is uh we just proved that we need more people with uh permissions uh for uh um yeah, Gmail, Discord roles, uh credit cards, uh to be able to open calls. We need a um, we need a, yeah, a logistic strategy operations. So we will address that. Um so not having operation depending on one in, in the real member. If I don't have a network today and uh so we, we wouldn't be having this call. So that shouldn't, we shouldn't allow that to happen. We need a, some, always a backup. Um preventing double payment for multiple work groups. This is talking about overlapping activities on the program and how we will uh collaborate and, and follow up tasks. Um how to support the ASI Alliance and connect with Ocean Fetch uh communities where applicable. Um if somebody wants to jump in and make a comment on these topics, this is when you see one of the ones I mentioned more relevant to the other. Um Any thought on the room? Okay, cricket. So I'm gonna keep going and um finish the uh with a discussed, already discussed topics. Um so again, quarter four budget timeline, uh open golf topics um and awareness. This have been uh even discussed on the channels, the Discord server channels. Um I think there was one concern raised up, but not, not properly addressed. As if you raise a concern, you should follow with a uh, an idea, a, a suggestion, a comment. Uh that didn't happen. So it came just only like a complaint. And yeah, that's all the idea of consensus process. Um I, I've been learning uh every second on this and we all understand that this next uh quarter process starting next uh Monday, we will use all the things that we have learned last quarter. So let's see, let's see, we applied knowledge. Um so holiday calendar thing, yeah, that we're proving uh living proof that we can survive holidays. Um again, we're addressing the impact of budget, of price, of market price into a budget. Um let's keep burning candles and let's see where it goes. But uh we need, we are building a system that need to survive uh ourselves, market prices, fluctuations and um yeah, we need to be uh able to keep working even the market goes down or up. So we were lucky for two quarters. This one, uh we're getting closer, but still budgets are gonna have to go low, lower. Uh so this takes responsibility, accountability and, and all these things that we are trying to build together. Um again, the work group uh sync agenda, that's the old one. Um and uh for what I have seen, uh there's some, some good ideas on the, on the R and D proposal pipeline, uh that community will have the opportunity to vote that will address all of these concerns, some of these concerns. Um there was another topic raised by Slate, onboarding topic by Slate. New members joining channels like uh graphics, marketing should showcase their work by creating stuff related to SNET and posting it on their social. So again, proof of work, this has been doing, been done by onboarding. Um for long ago and as we expand new work groups and guilds. Um yeah, proven track record uh and knowledge uh is useful um for onboarding and to start delivering and um not delivering um submitting a task or assigning task. That, that's proper English. Uh budget fitting in Q three, loss of cuts needed. How we approach it. And I think this one is gonna be the main topic on Thursday meeting. So uh we hope to see Peter back from holidays on this one. And it's gonna be the last um well, the monthly call before uh this new quarter budget and proposal iteration. So we're thinking it was important, important not to escape from the responsibility of, of having this meeting and to addressing all these important topics. Um I did it properly and I'm gonna go back to the agenda for G.
Okay, nice one, Gullimah. That was a really great one. That was lengthy, but actually great. Um so the next on the agenda, we have um, are you more?
Get in there.
Okay, I think it's loading. Okay, we have um, yeah, I think that's all we have for today. And we have um the question time that does anybody here have a question? I think Sedjo looks like he has a question. He looked like he have a question. Looked like he's so curious to know something, probably maybe the budget fits in. That's where the money is, so.
Um not really, but I was trying to follow the, the rhythm of previous meetings that you had. And well, yes, I will check this later slowly and try to understand better. Thanks.
Okay, that was very great. Sedjo, thank you very much. And does anybody have also? William, we have Boaz, we have Vanabas, Clement, Fogan and O E P. Does anybody have a question? Lots of eyes of great content. Okay. Okay, so in the absence of none, let's um, I don't know about the newcomers here. I don't know if Vanabas is a newcomer. I'm not really sure about that. Or if we have any newcomer here, you can, you're welcome to Singularity Net. And this is the town hall meeting we host. And do so to onboard yourself. If you are new to Singularity Net, you still to onboard yourself by reaching out to the onboard work group. And somebody will be there for you always. So um we have um, I think the, any other business that's open topics. Does anybody have like an open topic to address or to give out to this meeting? Hmm, I think Barney was, was, was kind of.
No, I, I'm, I'm gonna use this one, one minute of his time. Um so Clement, O E P, uh William, Foro G, everyone here. Uh the R and D is looking for ideas. So I haven't seen a proposal from you guys. This is the right time. So you open the link, uh you follow the guidelines. And uh let's, let's, let's throw some ideas on the, on the table. Let's try the system. It's good for us to have ideas to, to try this new operation system. So I'm looking forward to see small research uh ideas, ideation ideas. Clement, you're good at it. So why not you bring some uh to uh your friendly house uh members from the R and D. Foro G, the same. So marketing ideas are welcome, onboarding treasury, whatever impacts. So marketing ideas are welcome, uh, onboarding, treasury, whatever impacts, whatever idea.
Yeah, yeah, I, I wanted to speak on that. Yeah, I'm sorry. I, 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 I wanted to work out something, but you know, um, lately I've been very involved, not just with the ambassador program, I mean, deep funding, um. Yeah, basically, yeah, you know, I, I, I'm also uh on, on multiple other projects, trying to offer counselling, trying to assist with research and um, I'm also directly involved in a three-funded project. So there's a lot of work, but I, I don't know. I think submission closes today by twelve. So maybe just maybe I, I could be able to cook up something then. So, so, so sorry about that. Yeah.
Yeah, no worries. You're a fast cook. The idea, Clement, here is to also to team up, okay? I did, I did present a proposal, but with the just the idea to bring something that is useful for the community and then to delegate it, you know, I, I, I will, I will give the opportunity to developers on the, on the family. New members that are coming that they have great talent. So.
Yeah, so I wanted to say maybe someone, so.
Just a, a member that knows.
Sorry, I don't want to see maybe if, if someone here maybe has got an idea and um, maybe the person could reach out and we could, you know, just walk on something quickly and, you know, just an open call to anyone who's got an idea or maybe needs assistance with trying to refine the idea and stuff like that, that I, I could be open for teamwork.
Great, great. Thank you, Clement. That's, that's the whole. All ideal, this is very much. Um, so yeah, bring them in. There's the form.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, Fodogi, hold back to you, sorry.
Yeah, I see, um, Vani, she asked a question. Is there a budget limit for these ideas? And I'm not really sure. Maybe Gilmore can.
Yeah, yeah. So there's a limit budget, a limited budget fitted per quarter, but you can segment your proposal in three quarters. And you have for development, uh, one thousand per quarter. Uh, and for uh ideation and research, I think it's uh seven hundred and fifty dollars um to bring a research or ideation project. Uh, all the inputs on the, the link, Vani, uh, pretty simple. You, we made it as simple as possible and concrete as possible. And we use the guidelines that we have been learning from uh good practices. Now the project, we, we collaborate. So you follow, uh, and I'm looking forward to, to see one of yours or to team up with us on developing as, you know, everything, every single secret of this program. So, yeah, so the one I, I, I just submitted includes you, of course. So, um, yeah, that's it. I'm gonna go to the next slide. If anyone have any uh question in regards of this, you can DM me, okay?
Yeah, so there's the open topic part where you have anything, you can just put it up. It's, it's an open space, a safe space for you to speak up on any open topic at all. Doesn't have to deeply related. So anybody? Or should we move on? Anybody? I just have, I just have like a deep feeling that Vani has something to say. I don't know why.
If I did, I'd certainly say it. I haven't, I'm afraid. I don't know. I was thinking, let's start a conversation about how much we need Peter back. No, but I think we have done well today. So it's all good. We've had a very quiet town hall with not that many people. So I guess people are on their holidays, isn't it?
Yeah. So, okay, Clement.
Yeah, it's nice to see Sedjo, Sedjo here. I think I do recognize him now. Uh, jumped on the last time call a couple of days ago and then, yeah. So it's nice to see you, Sedjo. This is the personal welcome from me.
Thank you, Clement. Nice to see you too. Maybe I would like to ask about um the Education Guild because personally I'm interested in that guild and see the ways I could collaborate. I like to create some content or anything that could help to the mission for this quarter.
Okay, that's a very great one. And the best person you can meet up, you could also meet Clement. Clement is a member, myself, I'm also a member of the Education Guild. And also the best person, which is the workgroup leader, which is Slate. You could also send him a DM and probably gives you like a fast track of what has been going on within the guild and probably you catch up from there.
Okay, thanks. I will read them.
Problem. So, um, I think that's all for today, guys. Thank you, Gilmore. Thank you for backing me up. Thank you, Sedjo. Thank you, Vani. Thank you, Clement. Thank you. I gotta see with AI. I'm, I'm thinking with AI too. Thank you, William. Thank you, Boaz. Thank you, Barnabas. Thank you, O E P. Thank you for participating in today's town hall and we hope to see you in the next one, which holds on the tenth of September. That's, um, I think next week. So by the same time, eighteen UTC, that's, um, that's six PM UTC. So it's nice to have you guys and I say a big bye to everyone.
Thank you, Fodogi, for hosting. Great work, man.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Bye, guys.
Everyone, goodbye. Nice to meet you.
Hi, Sergio. Good to see you too. Bye, Vani.